Live in Spanish, please call 508-924-5155. Again, the number is 508-924-5155. Please focus your attention on the screen to hear this announcement in Spanish.
Hay una línea telefónica simultánea disponible para las personas que desean escuchar la reunión de la junta en español. Si desea escuchar la reunión en español, llame al 508-924-5155.
For those of us who unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be accessed on the PGCPAS YouTube channel for later viewing. Lastly, for recording purposes, the chairman reminds all board members to ensure their microphones are muted, turned on when speaking. Board member Walker, please read the prayer.
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. McMillan, please call the row.
Dr. Andrefield, present. Ms. Boozerstrader, present. Mr. Briggs, present. Ms. Brown, here. Ms. Goins-McHans, present. Mr. Jongo, present. Dr. Moss. Ms. Olivo, here. Ms. Walker, present. Mr. Jackson, here. Nine present.
Thank you. Oklahoma is now present. If there is no objection, the April 24th, 2025 meeting agenda will be adopted. There being no objection, the April 24th, 2025 meeting is adopted. Are there any corrections to the March 27th, 2025 board meeting minutes? April 10th, 2025 work session meeting minutes? April 17th, 2025 board boundary public hearing? There being no objections, the meeting minutes are approved. Now, for the PGCPAS spotlight, the chairman recognizes Superintendent House for the PGCPAS spotlight.
Thank you Chair Jackson, board members, community. I'd like for us to turn our attention to the monitors on the wall for a short video that specifies what's been going on in reference to the student summit as they do their best to save our planet.
I like that word, completely student-run, and it's actually students who care, you know, it's not a joke, it's not, we're not playing around, we genuinely care about what's happening.
There was no doubting the passion of any of the 200 students attending the third annual Student Environmental Summit recently at Bladensburg's Waterfront Park. Hailing from 20 different high schools, the students spent the day enjoying the outdoors that each is committed to saving. Whether it was bird watching.
I'm pretty sure those are two osprey up there.
Learning to fish.
Watch my thumb, watch my thumb. I won't catch you, stay right there. I won't catch, stay up. Watch my thumb, so when I release the thumb, it goes out.
Handling a bow and arrow.
I'm gonna have my arm that's holding the bow out all the way straight, my elbow is straight, my other arm, I'm gonna pull back all the way to my cheek, I'm gonna look where I'm shooting, I'm gonna pick one of these little floating ball targets, and I'm gonna let go.
Or getting down and dirty shoveling mulch. The young environmental activists were having the time of their lives.
It makes me feel really happy, I was on the team that kind of helped with the planning of it on the student side, and it's really nice to see it come to fruition, this is our third year doing it, and it's super exciting every single year to come and see people out here who care about the environment, doing stuff for the environment.
It's a little bit of preaching to the choir, because all of the students here either are taking an environmental science class or they're part of one of our after-school clubs that is based about environmental science, and so things like advocacy is really important, so they're learning about that today. They're still learning new stuff, not every one of the schools composts yet, so we've added composting at both of our meals, so they're really getting all the good stuff here.
Good stuff, indeed. There were boat rides on the Anacostia, displays of natural history body parts, and learning that casting a rod is a challenge, especially if your worm wriggles off the hook.
Where's my worm?
We have a casting practice, which is kind of in the style of cornhole, because cornhole's very popular in Maryland, people really like it, it's a fun recreational activity, so we kind of make a fun activity and turn it into a learning opportunity as well. So we have these fishing rods with beanie babies or little bean bags, and we kind of help have them practice casting into these fit the cornhole boards that have like fish painted on them, just to kind of get the, you know, practice without having the hooks and stuff involved first. And I think it really targets these students that, especially in today's day and age with technology and having like phones in your pocket, computers in your pocket, it's really easy to not get outside and not be really present in your environment, so I think it's a really great way to kind of come with your school, come with your friends, and just kind of almost like do these little test runs of all these different outdoor recreational opportunities and see what you kind of like to do.
So what do the students and their teachers have to say about getting more people to conserve the outdoors and to jump for joy as they did at the beauty of nature?
I think it's important for people to remember that even if they're not going to like a courtroom or they can't like do something drastic to help the environment, it's really the little things that we do day to day to help the environment, and anybody can make an impact.
Environmental literacy is super important to us, so the more we can spread it around, because we really need to create this foundation for our students.
Planet Earth will be in very good hands, thanks to PGCPAS's environmental students as its caretaker.
Does that conclude your report Superintendent House?
It does.
Okay, thank you so much, moving on to community shout-outs. Board members, this evening, we will be recognizing several students, in the consideration of the late hour, we will proceed with announcing the community shout-outs, and after the recognition, we will gather for a group photo all at once. So after Board Member Brown, then I will also have a community shout-out, and then we'll take the picture at once, so whoever Board Member Brown recognizes, just stay there until we all go, okay? Alrighty, so I want to pass it over to Board Member Brown.
Thank you Chair Jackson, so today, I would love to celebrate Yorktown Elementary, where are my Yorktown people at? Yay! I appreciate you all so much, good evening everyone, I'm thrilled to take a moment to shine a spotlight on some truly outstanding young scholars from Yorktown Elementary School, our District 5 Science Bowl finalists. These brilliant students have demonstrated incredible teamwork, critical thinking, and a passion for science that inspires us all. Making it to the finals is no small feat, and it speaks volumes about their hard work, dedication, and the support of their amazing teachers and families. Let's give another big round of applause to our Yorktown Science Bowl team. Your District 5 family is so proud of you, I want to make sure I let you all know who the panelists are, so we have Joslyn Kelm, who's the captain, she's in fifth grade, Ron Gabriel Marquez, who's also in fifth grade, Phaedra Owen, who's in fourth grade, and we have our wonderful alternates, Paola Ortiz Hernandez, who's in fifth grade, yay! Mary, and forgive me if I pronounce your name wrong, Mary Kumoluie, who's in fourth grade. We have Connor Turner, fifth grade, Noella Raimundo Melendez, who's in fifth grade, Jalen Keys, who's in fourth grade, Landon Sawyer, who's in fourth grade, and Simon Dietrich. But we can't forget about our sponsors, we love our sponsors, so Ms. Barbara Burnett, who is our fourth grade teacher at Yorktown Elementary, and our parent volunteer, I love our PGCPAS parents, because I'm a PGCPAS parent, Amy Kelm. We thank you so much, and we want to also give condolences to the, oh, I'm so sorry, we want to give condolences to the Yorktown family as well, so thank you so much, and if you all could join us up front while Chair Jackson takes the lead for the next group of incredible scholars.
Come on down, come on down. We could just stand, because there's a lot of people when they come, but we'll wait to, we won't take a picture at once, just stand in front of the dice. Robin, if you want to go out there and get them together? Congratulations! For... The next, alright. Okay, so next, we're gonna... Yeah, we're gonna stand up and take a picture.
Picture.
Picture. Alright, let's go, let's go. Alright, alright, we're gonna keep them here for the next shout-out, too. Just keep them to the side. Okay, alright, next up. "We are proud to recognize the outstanding efforts of students who have been excelling academically. Their dedication to learning, consistent, and hard work, and commitment to excellence have not only resulted in strong academic performance, but have also set a positive example for their peers. At this time, I would like to recognize two students who have shown qualities that are essential for success, both in and out of the classroom. Their achievements reflect not only their individual efforts, but also the support of their families, teachers, and their school community. Please join me in applauding Ms. Navee Maiden, 10th grader of Charles Herbert Flowers School." Come on, come on up here. She has a 3.9 GPA with over 800 community service hours. And Ms. Jamie Maiden, 8th grader at William Hall Academy, with a 4.0 GPA with over 80 service learning hours as well. Young ladies, congratulations, and continue to do amazing work. Now we all can go up there, let's go up there now. We're gonna go up there now, okay. Let's give it up one more time for our scholars. That was fun. Okay, it's always great to have positive news in Prince George's County, because we have a lot of great students here, and we just need to make sure we continue to elevate our students and showcase to the world that we have a lot of great things going on here, academically and athletically. So moving on to my, to my next piece is, as we continue to support our scholars and highlight the remarkable achievements, I would like to take the opportunity to congratulate Largo High School basketball team. Can you guys come to the front, Largo High School? Largo High School basketball team. Can you meet them up there while I read this? Make sure they, yeah, just be there. Largo High School basketball team on winning the second state championship. This incredible achievement is a testament to the dedication and teamwork and perseverance of the students, coaches, and entire school community. The determination and heart shown throughout this season has inspired pride, not only pride within our schools, but in our entire district. Your hard work has paid off, and you've earned your place at the top. Well done, Lions, well done.
Congratulations, absolutely, congratulations.
Okay. Now, it's a lot of, lot of, lot of good stuff going on in Prince George's County, we just want to make sure we celebrate everybody. At this time, I would like to invite all of you to join as I extend a heartfelt congratulations to our new board member, Amy Olivo. On our new appointment to District 4 of Prince George's County Board of Education, her strong community ties, commitment to equity, and inclusive leadership makes her a valuable addition to the board, we look forward to seeing the positive impact her student-centered approach and collaborative spirit I will have on the school system. Board Member Olivo, welcome to the board, we can't wait to begin working with you. Now, on a more somber note, at this time, I would like to call for a moment of silence as we honor the memory of the following PGCPAS staff, family, and community members. Shirley Curtis, mother-in-law, executive assistant of Office of the Chief Financial Officer. Elaine Williams, bus driver, Bladensburg, Bus Lot. Timothy Patterson, bus driver, Friendly Bus Lot. Talis Ford, teacher at Friendly High School. Jay Holland Senior, bus driver, Goodyard Bus Lot. Renee Myers, retirement coordinator. Shawn Muhammad, teacher and judge at Savania Woods. Doris Santiago, instructional media specialist at Cesar Chavez Elementary School. Thank you. The board informs the public of the following upcoming meetings, please turn your attention to the screen of the list of meetings. Please continue to check the board webpage for updates and more information. Now, moving to public comment, the chair recognizes the registered speakers for the public comments. Registered speakers have three minutes to make their presentations and may not relinquish any part of their speaking time, the board will recognize your comments but will not address them. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms, you will be warned once, if you continue, your comments will be muted, and you may be removed from the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, chair, board member, superintendent, principal, etc. There are 15 live public commenters tonight. First speaker is Mr. Christopher Hall, 8th grade student at College Park Academy.
Hello, my name is Christopher Hall, I'm an 8th grade student who is enrolled in College Park Academy, and I just joined this year. I like my school because, I like my school the most because of the friendly students, staff, and fun events that happen. Right now, charter schools all over the district are worried about the devastating budget cuts the board might pass. In College Park Academy alone, there could be a $500,000 reduction in funding. The teachers at College Park Academy are very helpful, patient, and understanding. They provide understandable information and give you attention if you need extra help. If there were bigger classes of students, then classrooms would be very chaotic and no one would ever learn anything. The chaos would only intensify if there were fewer teachers to regulate the students. I remember when all of College Park Academy's 8th grade went on a field trip to the Smithsonian National Museum of American History. Without enough funding from the board, that field trip might not have been possible. School supplies are important for basic education, such as pencils and erasers. More advanced materials are required, too, like algebra tiles and whiteboards. Without these tools, learning math would be much harder, because we would have to draw every graph in our notebooks. I chose College Park Academy because I wanted to find a solid school to transition into high school. Because of the environment, I now have straight A's and even enjoy difficult subjects like math. Please do not cut these funds, because it will drastically hurt all charter schools and cause some to close over time. Students like me need smaller classrooms and good teachers who help us to focus and learn. Thank you for listening to me, I hope you have a good evening.
Good job, good job, young man. Well done. We, we might have a future board member in our presence right there. Next, I want to recognize Courtney Hall, individual speaking on public charter school funding.
Good evening Chair Jackson, District 2 Representative Briggs and members of the board. My name is Courtney Hall, and I'm a District 6 Prince George's County resident and proud parent of a student at College Park Academy, as you just heard. I'm here tonight because a decision you're considering will dramatically impact my child's education and the future of charter schools across our county. The proposed change to increase the administrative fee from 2% to 6.15% may seem modest, but it creates a devastating $500,000 deficit for College Park Academy alone. This is not a minor budgetary adjustment, it's a fundamental threat to our school's ability to operate. Let me put this in perspective. Since 2005, the city neighbors' decision established a clear funding model for charter schools with a 2% administrative fee. This has been the standard for nearly two decades. Charter schools have built their entire operations model around this funding structure. What's particularly troubling is that this change comes at a time when the state of Maryland is actually providing more funding for education than in the past. Our children deserve their fair share of these resources. College Park Academy already operates efficiently despite significant challenges. We receive zero capital funding, forcing us to spend 19% of our budget just on the building lease. Now, this additional 4% cut would force painful decisions about reducing staff, educational services, and classroom sizes. The math is sobering, if this 6% withholding becomes permanent, most charter schools in Prince George's County will be forced to close within three to five years. This isn't just about numbers, it's about educational choice and opportunity. Parents chose College Park Academy because of its commitment to excellence. We should be protecting these successful educational environments, not undermining them. I respectfully urge this board to maintain the 2% administrative fee as established by the city neighbors' decision. In a $2 billion education budget, county education budget, this adjustment would have minimal impact on overall district finances, but would preserve vital educational opportunities for our children. The 7,000 children who attend Prince George's County charter schools are counting on your leadership, please do the right thing, thank you.
Stephanie Lomax, individual charter school budget cuts.
Good evening board members and Board of Education members. My name is Stephanie Lomax, and I'm a proud parent, a proud product of Montpelier Elementary, Kenmore Middle, and Laurel High Schools. I reside in the county as a business, reside in the county, own a business here, and am deeply invested here. My late mother advocated for me and other children during the busing era and worked for the school system for over 20 years. for the school system for over 20 years. So I stand on broad shoulders and am compelled and proud to advocate for the reconsideration of funding cuts to CMIT North Public Charter School, for my children and other children who will undoubtedly be impacted by this decision. Numbers never lie but instead always tell a story. CMIT North has established itself as a beacon of academic excellence. The high school graduation rate exceeds 95%. Students consistently outperform the state and the district by more than two times in both reading and math. The average SAT score is 1120 and MCAT testing scores rank in the 84th percentile. The elementary and middle schools also rank in the 10th percentile in the state, but these statistics are public information and I'm not reciting anything that isn't already known or easily obtained. Nevertheless, despite these achievements and the petitions of parents, students, teachers and the community that has already taken place, following the board's unanimous vote from the last board meeting to engage, for engagement with charter school operators and to report back findings with transparency and a plan, no engagement has occurred. Instead, PGCPS proposed that the budget cut of $1 million be increased to $2.3 million. Those numbers also tell a story. An additional 103% increase that would impact staffing, training and support structures that have been in place to nurture this school of excellence and effectively dismantle essential programs including special education and other resources that are needed and have proven to work. Charter schools are public schools, serving and adhering to the same laws, striving for the same educational goals and exceeding those goals with less than non-charter public schools. They deserve fairness, transparency and inclusion in decision-making processes, especially when the futures of our children are at stake. I and others here tonight urge you to hold leadership responsible to the directive of doing the work. Meet the charter school, meet with the charter school operators, engage in meaningful discussions, reevaluate these detrimental budget decisions, uphold the values and commitments to our children and find an improved, amicable solution that is grounded in collaboration. Thank you for your time. Go Tigers!
Dr. Jeffrey Mitchell, new public charter school application, Imagine Rock Creek Public Charter School.
Good evening, Chairman of the Board of Education, Prince George's County Public Schools and all of the board members that reside here. I'm speaking to express a strong support for the establishment of a new Imagine Charter School Incorporated in the Upper Marlboro area, particularly the 20772 zip code, which is District 9. As the pastor of Rock Creek and dedicated member of this community, I have witnessed firsthand the growing need for expanded school choice options to better serve our families. Upper Marlboro is experiencing significant residential growth with new neighborhood developments bringing an influx of families seeking high-quality education opportunities for their children. Given this expansion, it is imperative that we provide diverse educational options that meet the unique needs of our students and families. A new Imagine Charter School Incorporated would offer an innovative and personalized learning environment. It will also complement the existing public school system and contribute to the overall success of our children. Imagine Schools has a proven track record for fostering academic excellence, character development and parental engagement by incorporating a strong focus on individualized instruction and community involvement. Imagine Charter Schools Incorporated can provide a much-needed alternative to families that desire more choices for their children's education. I urge the Board of Education. I come humbly, yet passionately. I come humbly to approve the proposal for a new Imagine Charter School Incorporated in Upper Marlboro, Maryland, 20772. This innovation aligns with the county's commitment to educational excellence and ensures that we're effectively addressing the needs of our expanding population. Again, I urge you. God bless you and we are in District 9. There are also some community members in this area that are here with us now and I do have a petition with over 100 names on there that I will produce at any given time. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to submit that, excuse me, sir, can you, Pastor, can you submit that to Cindy Adale, please? Next up is Dr. Donna Christie.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Donna Christie, President of PGCEA. I stand before you tonight carrying the weight of thousands of educators' voices. Let me tell you what we're up against. Planning periods erased to cover classes, IEPs written on weekends, testing logistics dumped on us with little notice, all while we support children facing hunger, grief and unmet needs. The response from the PGCPS bargaining team? Let's study it. We don't need a study. We live the data. We came to the table with real proposals designed by educators rooted in experience and centered on student success. We're not asking for less. We're asking for better, solutions that make our schools safer, healthier and more sustainable. Educators are burning out right now. We've seen record vacancies. We've seen students go without certified teachers for weeks, months, even years. We believe in public education. We believe in our students, our schools and the, in the educators who show up every single day despite being stretched to the edge. We believe in safe schools and time to teach, not just manage chaos. But the PGCPS bargaining team has met our belief with betrayal. We brought proposals to reduce workload, protect planning time and ensure manageable caseloads. Their answer? Let's form a committee. Let's study it. That's not bargaining, that's obstruction. I came to this work as a school psychologist, trained to help children heal, but healing doesn't happen when systems are broken and right now, our system is broken. Tonight, you'll hear from educators across this district, all saying the same thing. We are doing too much with too little. We are carrying more than we can handle and when we ask for relief, the answer is study it. But we already know what's broken. We live it every day. We came with solutions. We deserve action. You, the board, have the power to insist on real solutions, not delays, not gaslighting. Educator workload is a crisis and after everything they carry every single day, they still teach our students. That's what commitment looks like. That's what a belief in public education looks like. We need our district to believe in us too, to stop making mistakes, stop making excuses and start taking action. Thank you.
Coleman Rose, individual educator, workloads.
Good evening. I'm Coleman Rose. I live in Greenbelt and teach English language development in Mary Harris Mother Jones Elementary School. Why do I do this? I love teaching students and contributing to their growth and development. I enjoy building working relationships with students' families and my colleagues. My passion for the profession, the joy of it, would be enough to keep me here until I retire. So, what's wrong? I teach in a system with a high loss of qualified teachers. According to a 2024 MSD report, our county lost over 14% of its teachers last year. Statistically, we are in the worst quarter of the state with the sixth-highest teacher loss rate. Evidence from our school system's website reveals that last year's attrition is no aberration. That source mentions higher pay in neighboring school systems, larger class, large class sizes, inadequate resources and limited instructional latitude as possible causes. So, what's wrong? You see, I wonder if I'm on a sinking ship. We lose teachers each year and suffer unfilled teaching positions. I see myself in the hull of a leaking ship that is PGCPS and the water is rushing in. This coupled with the excessive district test schedule and increasing work mandates mean there are a decreasing number of us being asked to accomplish an increasing number of tasks. Can this be fixed? My union says yes. Let's communicate to the administrative hierarchy what is happening. We have ready-to-go ideas on how to right the ship, how to ensure we have enough qualified teachers for all our county's children. So what's wrong? We present our ideas in open negotiations. Union representatives back up the proposals with lots of evidence. However, the hierarchy responds with what sounds like denial. The lack of preparation, evidence, engagement and care from PGCPS during negotiations disheartens me. It hurts. The ship is sinking and the captains in charge do not seem to be listening. The current structure of our jobs is unsustainable. That is what high attrition and vacancy number means, numbers mean. This is what is wrong. An inherently joyful and satisfying profession is ruined. And I still do my best to teach my students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jashawn Johnson.
Good evening, members of the board, fellow educators and community members. My name is Jashawn Johnson, a proud PGCPS graduate of Central High School, class of 1992. I am here tonight not just as a kindergarten teacher but as a mother of four, two of whom are in middle school. I am standing here tonight as someone who lives and breathes this work from every angle, every hour of the day. Before the sun rises, I am up, packing lunches, finding lost shoes and clothing items, mediating arguments, calming nerves about quizzes and friendship drama. I kiss my kids goodbye and send them off into a world that is asking more of them than ever before. And then I go into my classroom where 22 students, little faces of children are waiting for me to be their safe place, their consistency, their calm. And I show up for them every single day, even when I haven't had a moment to breathe for myself, even when one of my own children is struggling, even when I've been up late answering emails, reviewing data, grading papers, responding to parent concerns, comforting a child who couldn't sleep because they're being bullied at school. I'm not just teaching ABCs and 1-2-3s. I'm a mental health counselor. I'm a social-emotional learning coach. I'm an enrichment provider, providing enrichment opportunities for students in my school building. I'm supporting families who are hurting. I'm wiping tears, sometimes theirs, sometimes mine and even the parents. I'm tying shoes, giving hugs, checking on behavior plans, writing lesson plans and balancing hundreds of expectations that stretch far beyond the job description. Then I go home where my second full-time job begins, helping with homework, managing middle school emotions, getting dinner on the table, driving to practices, advocating for my own children and their schools and trying to give them just the peace of the energy that I've given to my students all day as a parent and educator. I carry the weight of two worlds. I'm a parent and a teacher and I am one of thousands doing this exhausting, relentless, beautiful work because we care so deeply about every child that walks into our lives every day. But make no mistake, this job that we have is not easy. It's very hard, but it's rewarding. And then I teach. Thank you.
Ms. Annette Robinson.
Good evening. The greatest threat to teacher retention is teacher workload. Teacher workload is a diabolical epidemic that is destroying the very fabric of the skilled intellectual capacity of highly qualified and aspiring educators. Let me tell you, 55% of teachers plan to leave the profession sooner than expected due to stress and burnt out. Why? Stems from teacher workload. Here's why I say so. As elementary classroom teachers, our responsibilities include everything, constant pull for testing, interpreting or documentation of data. We must support students in diverse ways, learning English while navigating trauma. The needs of the students must be met to close the academic gaps with no quality time for teachers to collaborate or plan. Let me tell you, collaborating planning is a much-needed component, but when it is manipulated by administration inducing irrelevant and already identified data or training already done, it's a waste of time and burdensome and such manipulation has no effect on student learning. Yet, we must teach. The workload is out of control and affecting the mental state of every teacher. We are forced to correct student behavior especially with no help from administration. We are often told to find a way to discipline that child and that's due to some behavior which a child may not have control over. So the child is sent out for timeout for the most outrageous behavior. In two minutes, back in class, the behavior continues, but the teacher must teach. Recording and documentation and managing student data of large class size is endless. This must be done daily. Think of a class of 28 students and you do three rotations per day. Let's say you teach three subjects per day. Do the math. Then you must honor the policy of two grades per week or else a letter of threat to reprimand is on its way. We must input data, share data with peers, communicate with parents, attend grade-level meetings, check emails and to recess and lunch duties. Data collection becomes repetitive. For example, already dibbles or letters, all data is already online, but some genius needs to give the teacher more work to input the same data in a template or spreadsheet. It is a waste of our instructional time which impacts student learning outcome. There will be a price to pay because this leads to lower student performance and teachers are overwhelmed with unnecessary tasks and yet we teach. Thank you.
Ms. Philomena Awalna, sorry about pronouncing your last name wrong.
No, I was ready for you this time. You did great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, good evening, Mr. Chair, Superintendent House, members of the board, educators, students and... educators, students, and community members. I can't top that. She said it all. But I'm gonna say this. First and foremost, I want to say that PGCPs is an amazing place to work and to learn, as is evidenced by these educators and students, community members that are here. I want that to resonate. But along with that, I want you to also understand that PGCEA is an amazing labor partner, and that's why we are here again. So, everything that is great can be improved. Tonight, I join my voice with my colleagues to highlight and say that the crushing workloads educators are experiencing is unsustainable. It's unsustainable. There are often not enough substitute teachers, and I want to kind of talk a little bit more about the substitute teachers part. There aren't enough substitute teachers to cover classes, and that falls again on teachers. Now, I want to say this is PGCPs's fault. Usually I come and I say we are partners, so we have solutions, but we have brought solutions to this board many times, or to members of this board. For example, when educators retire, they want to come back. They want to help. There is nothing on that form that says, "Check here," and after however many days you need to be away, you can come back and help. They've recognized what we are dealing with. So that is a simple, that is a simple solution that we are not taking into consideration. PGCPs can do better on that. I really implore you to do that simple checkbox on whatever form it is. And it's not only our educators, former educators, even community members that we have recruited. I go everywhere with PGCPs and PGCEA on me because this work is my calling. I've been doing it for twenty-five years. There are people who have been doing this for thirty-five, forty, and more years behind me, and we are here because it means that much. So we don't only recruit our former colleagues, we recruit people in the communities. But when they do everything that is supposed to be done, they do not get called. Last week, last, I want to say, April fourth, we had Maya Angelou Day. It was also her birthday. By the way, I'm from Maya Angelou French Immersion Ivy World School. That's my student and parent back there. They always come. But anyway, one of the ladies who, the artist that came to present at our school, she's a former arts teacher, she has done everything for PGCPs, and still she has not been called. She is not the first one. I can give you ten people like that. That is so saddening. Going on, oh, wow, and still I teach.
Thank you so much. Dr. Toni Martinette, individual educator, workload.
Hello, members of the school board, district administrators, Prince George's County educators, and community members. My name is Dr. Toni Martinette. I'm an English teacher at Oxon Hill High School, and this is my seventeenth year in education. I'm here today because I hope I can help everyone who works outside of direct educational contact with students understand what I and many other educators are experiencing, a crushing workload creating an educational crisis for our students. Let's explore that. In the four required English classes I teach, I have a total of one hundred and thirty-eight students. It takes time if I want to read each piece of writing and attempt to give them some meaningful feedback. Let's pick an easy one and pretend my students only wrote one paragraph. Even if I can read and comment on each paragraph in two minutes, that's still two hundred and seventy-six minutes. With my schedule, that would be three of my eighty-minute planning periods, provided I work bell-to-bell and there are no interruptions. So ideally, that leaves me then two periods of eighty minutes to plan and refine my lessons. But wait, we didn't account for the planning and grading of my yearbook classes, so take away one more planning period. Now I have eighty minutes to effectively plan for teaching. But wait, I have to make sure I've been keeping up with my two grades a week in each class, that's six different class canvas pages to review and sync. But wait, I have at least ten students absent during a week because of sports, clubs, field trips, or just being sick, so I need to reopen the assignments for their late work, grade that, and resync my scores all over again. But wait, it's the end of the quarter, and now I have to complete the data slides that my administrator is asking me to complete by going through every class and recording how many students earned each grade, list the names of the students that received an E, everything I attempted to do to prevent that E, and then respond to the reflection questions about what I would change to support those students more going forward. But wait, I teach English ten, so first and second quarter, I have to hand-score the written responses for each student on the district mandated benchmark exam. That means each quarter, there's at least a week of planning that I lose to score a piece of writing, which I should not be given a grade for in my gradebook. But wait, we haven't talked about the planning time I have to give up for training on how to administer the exam, practice hand-scoring, and the extra planning time to review the data to identify how to adjust my teaching. Even though I don't have the planning time to make those adjustments, we still need to make sure we have an agenda with meeting notes to prove we met and discussed the data. But wait, I have staff meetings, my evaluation meetings, my mandated department and collaboration meetings, and I better make sure I watch those hours of Safe Schools videos rolled out during the year as well. After all the grading, scoring, training, and reporting, then I teach my students. I started teaching because I want to support students in becoming the best versions of themselves they can be. As an educator, I want to give my time and energy to connecting with, understanding, and adapting to my students so they can have the most authentic and applicable educational experience. But where in that workload do I have time or capacity? When I moved to teach in Prince George's County five years ago, I was excited for the new adventure and for the work, to work with amazing students in a thriving and diverse school district. I find myself questioning how much longer I can keep going in this profession, or at least in this district.
Ms. Harris, individual educator, workloads.
Good evening, members of the board, community members, of course, my union family. My name is Sante Dawson-Harris, and I serve as the lead teacher of U.S. History at Dr. Henry A. Wise Junior High School. But I'm also an advisor for Peer Forward College and Career Services. I'm also an academic advisor for the athletes, helping them stay eligible every season. But I'm also over wellness to help with mental and emotional issues of the teachers that we sometimes always forget. I want to share you what a typical day in my life looks like because understanding of what we do explains why we need more support. My day begins well before the students walk through the door. I have to arrive early to review lesson plans, prep materials, respond to parent emails, clean my room, because that's never done. We forget about colds, flus. So that box of Clorox wipes that I purchased, that's what I use. Make sure there's hand sanitizer. Make sure there's Kleenexes for the students because they don't always have access to that when they walk through the door. Check in with the teachers that I mentor. And as a lead teacher, I support newer educators troubleshooting classroom issues from aligning the curriculum to basic classroom management because we all know what you were learned, what you were taught at the collegiate level does not always translate to the classroom. As a lead teacher, I provide a listening ear when the day has been hard, as well as helping everyone learn the over fifty apps on clever needed to actually enforce and teach the curriculum. By eight-thirty a.m., I am also hosting my first team meeting to review data, adjust instruction based on what our students' needs. I might step into a colleague's classroom to model a lesson or help with a challenging dynamic with a student. By nine, I am reviewing another IEP or five-oh-four plan to help a teacher modify a writing assignment so we are actually aligned with the IEP. By ten-fifteen, I am organizing a visit from a local college and making sure logistics are in place because as a club advisor, I'm also a college and career coach. Midday, I'm on the phone with the university because our guidance councils are overworked, so that has fallen on my club. Planning visits for college fairs, responding to district administrators who want me to host, state officials, as we did yesterday when State Senator Nick Charles was in my class. But I'm also in the hall, playing security because there's not enough. And so, before I can even get into my classroom, have to make sure everyone else is in the hall. Did you hear me? Go to class, sweetheart. I got you. What you need, a snack? Go get one out of my snack drawer that I paid for. So, as I am not eating lunch because I'm meeting with a student who's struggling, especially since we just lost another student this week, Mama Harris, I need you. So I give up my lunch to make sure. And then guess what? I teach.
Brian Glover, individual.
Hold on just a little while longer. Hold on just a little while longer. Hold on just a little while longer. Everything's gonna be all right. I'm Brian Glover, vocal music teacher at the Barack Obama Elementary School. Music expresses that which cannot be put into words and that which cannot remain silent. Let us hit the right note. By making classroom sizes smaller and containable for all of our scholars, they deserve a calm, relaxing, smooth learning environment. We need to face the music and understand that all educators do more than their job description and time and pay. We are our scholars' emotional support system by counseling, therapists, friends, mothers, fathers, aunt, uncle, grandparents, and many other descriptions I will not rename. Many times, as we play it by ear, by helping the total child be their greatest song, we want them to march to the beat of their own drum. We really do. We really do. We would not be here today if we did not care. Too many minor chords have been played in many sad melodies, but we must keep the beat and be music to our scholars' ears every day. Specialists in all levels teach five hundred more scholars a week. We prepare for concerts with no planning released, management, behavior, and crowded classes with no support, and we care and stay long hours planning, after-school programs, and the performing arts to be music to someone's ears. Most of the time, we don't feel as though we call the shots, but we keep the beat and strike up the band and chorus. We don't want to dance to someone else's tunes. We need to stop going off-key and playing that second fiddle. It's time for us to be in harmony and to be in tune with and making beautiful music together and strike a balance. We need to keep the beat and make beautiful symphony. But you know what through some of this drama club? I can say with pride for many in my shoes, and then I teach and serve my students.
Teresa Dudley, individual educator.
The good part is I made it here without hitting anybody. The bad part is I left my glasses in the car, so I'm gonna have to wing this. But I know what I need to say here tonight. My name is Teresa Mitchell Dudley. I live in Ardmore Village. I just recently bought a home here in Prince George's County because I love Prince George's County. For the past thirty-plus years, I've been an educator. I started out as a substitute teacher, computer lab lady, first grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. Then I became the president of Prince George's County Educators Association, and I served for six years. Then I moved up, became the vice president of Maryland State Education Association. After that term, which I didn't win the presidency, but I love my job, so guess where I'm at right now? Illinois Choa Middle School, teaching eighth-grade social studies to the stinky ones. And I say that with all love in my heart because I love my students. They've taught me how to cuss in colors. They've taught me all of the new dances and how to look stuff up on TikTok, so I'm okay. But the problem is, our school is woefully understaffed. Our school system is woefully understaffed, and I know this from my experience. When I was the president of PGCEA, we had about one hundred and twenty-five thousand students in our school system. We now have over one hundred and thirty thousand and two thousand less teachers. So what does that tell you about what's happening? What's happening is, as was said earlier, there's just not enough bodies in the building sometimes for safety. Sometimes a principal will come to say, "Ms. Dudley, your class is over here." I know, but the fight's getting ready to break out over here. I said, "And I need to make sure the students are moving and not on the wrong side of the hallway." And then I have to make sure that I understand, because I've been out of the classroom for nine years, I gotta learn all of this software all over again, teaching students who are way behind because of COVID, who can't write. Oh, and by the way, I don't speak Spanish very well. I speak French almost fluently, but I have not been offered an opportunity to take Spanish classes so that I can reach my students. The students are teaching me Spanish while I'm learning English. I design my lessons around history, literacy, and with what's going on, U.S. history is very important for our students to learn. I do not want to disservice them. But with all of the things, the testing, wait a minute, we got the PSAT, we got the benchmark, we got, oh, wait, we got MCAPs coming up. We have all of these different tests. I've lost over a month and a half of instructional time. So I say all this to tell you, I love my job. I love being in the classroom. I love my children and my community, and I'm gonna die in a sword for it because that's what God put me here to do. But guess what? Tomorrow, I'm still gonna go teach.
All right, Ms. Shannon Reed.
Good evening. Most pressing issues in PGCPs, including academic achievement and teacher retention, are related to safety and security. Safety and security can only be accomplished with trustworthy people. Trust is revealed in how people discern the truth, tell the truth, and face the truth. Recently, a teenage male student fired an apple into my classroom before running down the hallway. When I stepped into the hallway to see who hit me with an apple that ricocheted off me like a tennis ball, the young man who watched his peer assault a grown woman stated it was two girls. Does he need a camera, or does he need internal development driven by meaningful personal interactions? The quality of students' thinking is also revealed in the vicious attack on a fourteen-year-old student at Potomac. Weeks after the attack, the student's mother wept at a town hall where four huge cameras had been brought to ostensibly tell a story. The attack captured on cellphone by other students reflects students' appetite to consume real violence as entertainment, accepting roles as consumers instead of forging roles as leaders. What is going on in the soul when the injured are left to fight injustice alone? The burden of the injured was evident in her mother's plea and position revealed at the town hall. Devastated and alone, her mother came to the town hall to pursue justice for her daughter, surrounded by leaders. Only Ms. Phyllis comforted the lady. Does PG, does leadership that leaves problems and people untouched reveal something about the system? In Thinking in Systems, the author asserts that healthy systems remain so when the purposes remain intact, and further explains that changing this even when other parts remain the same drastically changes the system. Unlike changing the elements, which create the least effect on the system, thus, changing the superintendent has not changed the system, changing the leaders has not changed the system, changing the curriculum alone will not change this system. In Thinking in Systems, the author claims that the focus needs to be on interconnections since changing the interconnections destroys the identity of the system. PGCPs's approach to leadership has absolutely changed the interconnections between and among individuals. Most students come to class with expensive earbuds or headphones, cellphones, and devices, but no pens, pencils, notes, notebooks, nor energy for learning, and few students in each class actually have great-level skills. Teachers are fighting these battles alone. In truth, students simply do not read enough, and the teaching, and the reading interventions undermine growth. Dreambox sells dreams, and Achieve Three Thousand produces underachievement. Students need reading specialists, not administrators and theories, but teachers have been displaced by administrators overreach and replaced with software programs. Like gentrification, this approach displaces and replaces instead of connecting and restoring. Safety and security require justice, which someone described as doing the right thing for the right people in the right proportion at the right time. This is the right time to ask teachers and students, why are teachers and students so compromised when there is so much administration? This is the right time to ask, are all the parts actually working together? If so, why are students absent and teachers leaving? Most importantly, now is the time to ask why so many students are dying. Love protects and restores. Does love ever remain silent or distant when people are being destroyed and you have the means to change this? PG, PGCPs can change this, but it must change to do so. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. We've received forty-one written public comments.
Love protects and restores. Does love ever remain silent or distant when people are being destroyed and you have the means to change this? PGCPS can change this, but it must change to do so. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. We've received 41 written public comments, all of which have been uploaded on Board Docs for viewing. Written comments will continue to be uploaded on Board Docs as they are received. There were no pre-recorded videos. Thank you all for the comments tonight. Moving on to the superintendent's report. The chairman recognizes Superintendent House for his report.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. I'd like to invite Chief Financial Officer to the microphone to share a presentation specifically around charter school funding. As she gets the presentation started, this presentation will be followed by a transportation update as well from our chief operating officer.
Right, Mia, can you put five minutes and then give them another five minutes for the second presentation? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. At the March 27th board meeting, a request was made of superintendent to collaborate with charter network leaders to collect policy recommendations to develop a comprehensive plan to determine per-people allocations, provide greater transparency and accountability in the charter agreement, authorization, and renewal process and funding. And then come back and return to present that plan to the board at today's meeting. Since then, the charter office has had small group meetings with board members to discuss authorization, to discuss the authorization and renewal process, as well as to provide a general overview of charter schools, including academic and student performance, as well as financial monitoring and overall governance. In the brief time we have today, we will touch upon the charter allocation process. Starting back in February of 2024, we worked towards transitioning the charter schools from the traditional funding, from the traditional or the legacy funding allocation model to align with the new blueprint funding allocation methodology. As you know, the funding follows the students for all of our schools, and so it's based off of student demographics. And those resources are allocated to each of our schools. So we went through that initial calculation for our charters. In addition to the blueprint funding for all the different programs, charters continue to receive the transportation revenue allocation. That was part of the legacy funding formula. So when you consider the blueprint funding formula, the traditional transportation, that total revenue was offset by the legacy 2% administrative fee that was withheld. During that time, once we went through that calculation and compared it to the prior year's per-people allocation for fiscal year 2024, 70% of our charters were receiving less funding in 2025 than they would have in the previous year. So the district provided additional funding subsidy, also known as a hold harmless, of around $6 million to keep the per-people levels consistent for those seven schools. At that time, we communicated with the charters that that hold harmless was going to be a one-time support to help them during the transition from the legacy formula to the new funding formula. And we provided them with the funding per-people amounts for the remaining fiscal years for '26 through '29, so they could begin doing revenue projections of what the funding would look like on a going-forward basis. We also informed them at that time that we would be reevaluating the legacy administrative fee structure, which has been set at 2% as previously presented. But that fee would be going up beginning in fiscal year 2026. We also let them know that the retirement cost for teachers that had been absorbed by the district would be allocated to the charters, as it is for all of our schools, and would be coming out of their allocation amount. Finally, we committed to going through and having a closer look at all of our centralized services, clearly defining and documenting what those are, having that formalized between those that are mandatory and optional, and then coming back through the process as we prepared for fiscal year 2026. So we finalized the year with the information and began fiscal year 2025. In August of 2024, MSDE established a charter work group, which consisted of charter operators as well as LEAs to collaborate and come up with recommendations around the funding model allocation on a going-forward basis, now that you have this blending of the commensurate funding, which was the legacy framework, as well as the blueprint funding methodology. We met twice, once in September, once in October. Took a break for the month of November, a short month, and we had plans to come back in December. However, on December 3rd, the State Board of Education issued an opinion regarding blueprint funding and commensurate funding. Out of that ruling that came in early December, there were three key takeaways. The first one was around the legacy 2% administrative fee, which was being rejected by the State Board of Education. Instead, they wanted the charter operators and the LEAs to work together collaboratively in good-faith negotiations around those services that would be negotiated and would be optional for the charters to either participate in or not participate in, in addition to those that would be considered essential. And then they also outlined what's recognized as a sped overage, which is basically the difference between our sped revenue that we receive for all of our students with disabilities compared to the costs associated with providing supports for those students. That deficit or... It's hard to get through all this in five minutes, but should I continue or do you want me to pause right here?
Can you wrap it up in a minute?
Yeah, just give me one more minute. So basically, that difference between the revenue and the expenses is around $178 million for the district as a whole, not including sped transportation and not including non-public. The charter share of that is, there's revenue assigned to that, and it's recognized in the state board ruling that revenue associated with covering the sped overage is not allocated to any of our schools, including charters. So when you look at the charter share of it, there's still a difference or an excess of about $1.6 million. That difference is not being allocated to the charters. That's being absorbed by the district. So as we wrapped up this process, we did go through and meet with all the charters at the end of March into April, and we're continuing to work through the centralized services process. The charter group will be reconvening in May of 2025, and we will continue to work through this process with coming up with funding methodology recommendations to the state superintendent.
Thank you, Chief Howell. Okay, I wanted to open up for questions from the board. Where's my little chart with the names? Are there any questions from the board? I don't know, it's not working. Okay, Board Member Brown.
Yes, thank you so much, Chair Jackson, Superintendent House, and Chief Howell. I did have a couple of questions because I do have two awesome charter schools in my district, Imagine, as well as Friendship. I think the biggest question that a lot of my constituents had is they kind of want to know, number one, the difference between the funding public schools get and the funding that charter schools get as far as it looks like per pupil. Because I think there's a misconception that public schools get more or charter schools get less. Can we get some clarity around that, please?
Absolutely, that's a great question. So the blueprint outlines a per-people amount for foundation, which is one of the primary funding streams that we receive for every single student. That is the same amount for every single student across the district. In addition to that, there's additional funding that's received for the students who need it the most. Includes special education, multilingual, and compensatory education. Depending on the demographics of the school, the funding at each school may look very different on a per-people basis. For those schools that have a higher student count of those that are compensatory education or ML, their funding will be higher than a school that does not have that demographic need. Same thing with students with disabilities. And so it will vary by school, and that's the intention of blueprint, the resources following the students that need those supports the most. So on a per-people basis, it does look different, but the per-people amounts applied to each student demographic is the same for every single school in the district.
Okay, thank you. The other question that I have is, you know, we all know that the state... Oh, I'm sorry. Am I... Is it still my time? Chair Jackson, I apologize. I think we're gonna probably do another round.
Board members, this board is not working right now. So if you do have a question, we might have to go old-school and just raise your hand because I can't see anybody. I know that Board Member Goins McCants had a question.
I did, Chair, but I'd like to give my colleagues an opportunity to ask their questions first, if you don't mind.
Okay. Okay, cool. Does anybody else... Okay, Board Member Amy.
Thank you so much. You mentioned that the charter work group will make recommendations to the state superintendent. Can you clarify what, kind of, who the decision-maker is? Is the state superintendent the ultimate decision-maker on these items?
So when the ruling came out in December, it really focused on a very sort of limited scope around the formulas at this point. As I mentioned, the administrative fee and sped overage. Outside of that, when it comes to how the funding formulas are determined for each district within the state, it does vary from LEA to LEA, depending on where they are in the process. And so, and it's been that way even under the old legacy funding formula as well, where there were inconsistencies. So really, the goal is around having some more, to have finalized or formalized rules and regulations around what that funding formula looks like. And so there's some level of consistency. So it really is around providing recommendations to the state superintendent. And then from there, I suspect, between the state board and the state superintendent, final decisions will be made around what that process will look like on a going-forward basis.
Thank you.
Let's go, no more hands. Okay.
Thank you so much, Chair Jackson. I don't want to get too far off of what Chief Jackson, I mean, excuse me, Chief Howell has shared. But I do want to point out that this was not... The request was much more than just about the budget. It was about collaboration, and it was about specifically what recommendations were given to come up with something that was collaborative and to find out how we can make sure that we are also... And I'm checking to make sure I'm not misremembering what it was that I said, but specifically about being able to talk about greater transparency and accountability. We can't talk about accountability if we are only hearing about numbers. And obviously, numbers and finance is important. I chair our operations and budget and fiscal affairs committee, so that's important to me personally and to my constituents. But this is not all we asked for, and I just want to point that out. I don't want to stop or, you know, mess up the proceedings, but I do want to highlight this is not what we asked for.
Okay, thank you so much, Chair Jackson. I first want to just reiterate my colleague Goins McCants's sentiment that, you know, there was a discussion about having a substantive, you know, process. And I know that this isn't obviously on you, Chief Howell, but I think this is really on the team as a whole. But I also had some questions about, I talked to a few charter leaders, and they talked about this piece around the 2%. There was a discrepancy around whether there was communication about the 2% or the 7%. And so what I heard is that they've been told that they would have to cover 7%. I know this isn't a part of the presentation. But I wanted to start there and just see if that, has that been communicated with charters? Are they for sure gonna have to pay 7%?
On average, the percentage for '26 is around 6%. And what we shared with them is that when we reviewed the calculation for each of them for fiscal year 2026, we let them know that we are still obviously working through our budgeting process, and that number may likely come down. It's not gonna go up greater than that 6% amount that we provided with them. We are still going through, as I had stated earlier, the rest of our review of centralized services internally as a district. And then we are sitting down with the charters to go through that good-faith negotiations process of our centralized services before the budget is finalized, which will then impact ultimately that percentage that will be deducted from their allocation. But it's not 7%, it is, on average, it's 6%.
And it's likely to change, that they haven't gotten like a confirmation that it could go lower, I think is what you said.
Because our budget's not finalized yet, so yes.
Okay. And is that gonna be a part of the discussion with the charter? The convening group, the working group that's convening in May?
So it's two different processes. So we're working through our '26 process, and part of the ruling that came out from the state board was to serve as a framework for our budget for this year, the recommendations coming from that state ruling around that process. And so that has really served as our basis for our budget for 2026. As we're finalizing 2026, part of that process will revolve around the good-faith negotiations of the central services because that is also a key component of that ruling that came out.
There's another piece. I wanted to make sure I got my question in before the time is up, and you can finish answering that part, hopefully. But I did want to just say also that what I was hearing is that there is a redundancy of costs. So that charters have to pay for the administrative pieces around having, you know, someone to hire their staff, having someone to cover the after-school programs, things that they, I think apparently, are also paying for or being budgeted for out of their own budgets that PGCPS is charging them for. So like HR, they're covering some of those costs. Can you just clarify, I didn't get to get the specifics, and I apologize for not having like a really clear question, but that's what I want to know is, are they paying for additional costs in addition to losing funding?
Sure, so let me just finish up the last piece around the collaborative piece. That is really looking towards the change in the, or refining the funding calculation for fiscal year '27. So that collaborative group is not gonna impact 2026. So to answer your question around the central administrative services, it is around those services that we provide specifically to support our employees that work in charter school buildings. So paying their payroll, their benefits, retirement services, risk management, workers' compensation services, professional development, hiring and staffing, those types of services, accounts payable. That's how we pay the charters. I mean, it's those types of services that are needed to support the charter schools specifically. They will have the option to opt into curriculum and instruction and other types of things that might be specific, that might be beneficial to the students that they may want to use or may not want to use. So they will have that option. But when we're talking about those services, it is really around what we are providing to our PGCPS employees, as well as supporting the charters from an overall operations standpoint.
Thank you, Chief Howell. Wait till the second round, please. I just want to remind board members and staff that we're gonna do this in 2 minutes and 30 seconds. So for your question and your response, we want to make sure that we contain it within the side of that 2 minutes and 30 seconds. Moving on to our next person, I have Board Member Walker. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. As we think about charters, also have charters in District 9 as well, a number of charters, and clearly one that is aiming to be in District 9 that I didn't quite know about today. We are full of charters. But, you know, I'm a fan of choice, but I also want to make sure we have all of the information that we need. And I know that there's a discrepancy, it feels like, tonight around whether a collaborative meeting took place or didn't and what happened inside of that meeting. So maybe you can talk about that because I think what I heard you say inside the presentation that a meeting did occur, a collaborative meeting. I just want to get clarity on that, that's one. Let me continue really quickly. The other piece is around the 2%. I know specifically what I asked for, for data, is what does the law say we need to provide for our charters? What are we providing? What is in excess? And what are we doing in order to enhance the experience of all of our PGCPS scholars in our charter schools and our traditional public schools? And I think we have that inside of the deck. I know you couldn't get to it today. But two pieces are the 2%. And I understand that, I believe I understand that the law says it could go upwards to 25%, but we've been at 2% for quite some time. And so the increase is also to make up for the deficit that we're having inside of all of our schools for Prince George's County. So I know I'm giving you a lot to talk about in the remaining one minute. So maybe the second round, you'll come back. But the second piece beyond the 2% is the PGCPS sped overage. If you could just explain that and what the impact of that is for our charter schools as well, that'll be great. I didn't leave you a lot of time. You can use my second round, too.
I'll start with the last one first around the sped overage. That is clearly defined in the ruling that came from the state board. I want to be very clear that there's not legislation... I want to be very clear that there's not legislation with regards to this um calculation, the funding calculation for charters. It's all been about rulings from state boards, coming from cases and things of that nature, which is why there's this push to having some sort of formalized rules and regulations. So as it relates to the admin fee.
Uh, thank you. Can you finish up your statement and then we can um move the second part of that question to the next round?
All right. So as it relates to the admin fee and relates, and as it relates to the sped overage, that's not in legislation, but it's all about these rulings that have been provided. So that's where they're really looking to have some consistency around how do we interpret and define what that looks like. The sped overage is really tied to services that we provide for, it's a math calculation, looking at our budget, our cost for sped and the revenue that we get. So that's a pretty clearly defined way to capture that. All the LEAs are looking at their essential services that they provide to charters and identifying what those are. And they're looking at the optional services and looking at what those are. And so there is differences in how each LEA is approaching that aspect of it because each district's budget is different. So that's where there, I think there's a little gray in terms of looking for maybe consistency across the state. But essentially, it's looking at your essential services that you have to provide, like processing payroll versus, you know, I don't provide funding for professional development or different things of that nature. So it just really does vary from district to district. But there are some general um consistencies in how we're thinking about those types of discretionary versus required services.
Thank you, Chief Howell. Moving on to the next show of hands because this is working intermittently, so. Okay, Brown two. All right, so I'll start with, uh, Dr. Eniffel. Did you have anything? Okay, uh, round two, uh, board member Brown.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. Just in going after what um board member Goins McCants said, I also requested that we get, I guess, information or get an interpretation from the state's attorney's office. And I wasn't sure if you all got that information.
No, that's not something that's been provided at this time. As I said, the ruling has kind of been the governing framework that we've all been leveraging along with our own individual general councils to review uh the interpretation of that and how we're moving forward. So again, there's a, there's a lot of um uh gray right now in the space that we're in and which is why we really kind of focused on the limited aspects that were clearly outlined in the guidance. And it was really referred to as guidance to LEAs as you're working on your budget. These are some things you need to consider for 2026. And then we're going to look toward a stat, towards establishing these rules and regulations that will support this process on a going forward basis.
So with this budget cut, I'm just curious, what, are we looking at loss of personnel in charter schools as well? I, I just wanted to hear it from the budget people to see.
That's not a question that we answer because the charters develop and build their own budgets. And so how they decide to utilize those funds is not determined by the district.
Sure. And how is this formula different from the last formula? Is there a big difference?
Well, the funding formula is different because it's, it's tied to how the district receives its funding, which is tied to students. And so that's, that's, I think, where it's very different from how it has been in the past historically because we used to look at our overall budget and then sort of there were certain exclusion items you could deduct from your budget. And then that remaining amount was used to determine a per pupil amount allocation for the charters. Now blueprint, it's, it's, it's baked into the funding formula um for blueprint in terms of how that funding is generated for each school. So even from one charter to the next, that per pupil amount's going to look different. When you think about for our schools, for our traditional schools versus the charters, the demographics are very, very different. So when you look at the foundation funding as an example, for our schools, that makes up about 50% of the revenue. But when you look at ML and CompEd, that's another 42%. It's a decent amount for the charters.
So I want to ask this question just to make sure because I don't have a lot of time.
Board member Brown, I think you're going to run out of time.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Briggs.
Okay, thank you so much. And um Chief Howell, first, thank you again for answering all the questions. And I know that you're kind of in the hot seat right now, so I empathize. But I do want to just say that another piece that I'm hearing from some of our charter leaders is that um there's a budget that's shared, but it's not an itemized budget. So they're only seeing, they're not seeing all of the different um prioritized funding streams that exist for a typical school. They're only seeing what they're getting. And I just want to clarify, like, are they getting kind of a modified budget? Or are they getting the full list so that they can see what they aren't getting versus what another school is getting?
I'm not sure I'm, I'm following what they're seeing versus not seeing.
Yeah, and this is a, this is a lack of my like fully understanding what I was asking the charter leader, but essentially.
So what we provided to the charter operators is what we provided and the principals for the charters is what we provided to each of our principals, which was this is the funding that was generated by your school. These are the uh, uh, direct resources um coming out of that. Well, for a school, a traditional school budget, it's a bit different because obviously the district manages a lot on their behalf. And then they have the amount that they're responsible um for using to build out and develop their own individual budget. So what our operators receive and the principals received for those operators is the same thing that our principals for our traditional schools received as well. And we did outline for them very specifically, this is your student count. This is the per pupil amount so they could see how it was calculated. And then from there, um, they have the details of, of um, of, of the positions that they have currently and then what they have access to be able to decide how they want to build their budget for next year from the dollars that they actually receive.
So essentially, you're saying that what a traditional school, but whatever a traditional school gets is the same thing a charter school gets. There are no missing items on that.
That is correct. It's different types of supports, but yes.
Okay. And then I guess the last question I have is just like, how much, how, how often and to what extent do you engage charters in any of the budget discussions? And to what extent is innovation? So like, I, I liked the discussion that I was having with the charter leader around redundancies in charges. And I just want to know, to what extent does that happen naturally in any type of partnership with our charter networks? Do you have in any one time when you meet with them, do you discuss innovations and some of the problems and ways to improve them?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to that a little bit and then I'll also defer over to the charter school office because they meet with the charters on a regular basis. When it comes to the finance team, we do engage with them on a periodic basis throughout the year, particularly around this time of year, obviously, when we're working on the budgets. Um, and there's also communication that we send to them on a quarterly basis. But the charter office does engage with them on a very regular basis. And there's a myriad of different matters that they discuss during those meetings. I'll defer over to them.
Thank you. Dr. Eniffel.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Siobhan Hall Smith. And I am joined by Associate Superintendent Coleman and Charter School Liaison Jubilee Ransom. Is it? Get closer? Okay. Uh, I don't know if we can go to slide 52 in the presentation. If we cannot, I will just do a voiceover for uh the ways that the charter office collaborates and communicates with our charter operators. It is slide, excuse me, 51. My apologies for that. But I'll do a voice, voiceover for how we provide support. So beginning in October of 2024, there has been consistent two-way communication with or between the charter school office, operators, principals, and central office staff. And they've come in the following ways. Operators, uh, we have participated in quarterly site visits. There is a monthly operator meeting with the charter office. Additionally, during these monthly meetings, the operators have had an opportunity to uh speak with Superintendent House, our CFO, and representatives from pupil accounting. In addition to this, there is a standing meeting with uh the Charter Alliance chairpersons. And those chairpersons are the two charter operators who are selected to represent Prince George's County at the Maryland Association, excuse me, Alliance of Public Charter Schools. As it relates to our principals, the information is here with quarterly informal meetings, ongoing school visits, and also do through monthly area and cluster meetings. Uh, the information that the charter office shares with our senior cabinet or chiefs and the superintendent is by way of bi-monthly briefs or updates and also bi-monthly uh one-on-one updates with Associate Superintendent Coleman and also with Chief Davis. Uh, to add to this, that's not here uh on the slide. We also, uh, this quarter, uh, piloted an initiative where each charter operator, principal, uh, the CFO, and members of the budget and finance team, we walk through every aspect of the budget, the funding stream, and also in that meeting asks for an opportunity of what are, what are we missing, right? What should we know? So that was uh an initiative that was piloted for uh Q4, Q order four reconciliations and also looking ahead at uh school year 26.
Does it complete your comments? Thank you. Um, moving forward, Dr. Eniffel.
Thank you. Um, I just have a quick question, Chief Howell. So obviously, there's been a lot of conversation about the admin fee as well as a host of other things. I'm just curious to hear directly from you, what would be the impact to PGCPS, to Prince George's County Public Schools, if we were to actually maintain the admin fee?
I mean, it's a zero-sum game. And so any impact would require cuts from other places, from other schools in order to support pulling back that fee in order to support that. And so um I don't have the amount quantified right in front of me in this moment, but um I believe the amount um that would be required, it's obviously going to impact our overall budgeting resources that we set aside for all of our schools. And so in order to do that, it, it requires determining where that funding is going to come from.
If I may, so I hear you saying that you don't have the actual number, but have you actually thought through other alternatives? And could you speak to what some of those alternatives were?
We would have to evaluate what that would mean to all of our schools if we were to make that type of adjustment. When we uh went through the requested budget cycle, as you know, there were budget cuts that were made to deliver a balanced budget. There was a lot of uncertainty going into the budgeting cycle, to the requested cycle and um what was going to happen coming out of the legislative season. We have a little bit more certainty around um the blueprint formula, which was in question. But there's still uncertainty, obviously, around funding that's going to come from the county and what might still happen at the federal level. So there's still a lot of risk associated with our budget because we don't quite know what's going to happen with the funding um for our federal programs, such as our Title I, food nutrition services, um, and that is going to have a substantial impact on our budget. Based off of what we know right now, um, in order to provide that type of a change, would impact resources available to all of our schools. And so it would have to be an adjustment that would be um required in order to provide that kind of change, that we would have to look at and evaluate the impact across all of our schools, not just for the charters. The funding would result in that kind of a change.
Thank you. Are there any more comments? Okay, uh, I got you, Robby. Is your round two? This, this is round two? Okay, uh, well, Zakia? All right, and sorry, our board is, is, is working intermittently, so raise your hands, please. Board members, Zakia?
Thank you, Chair. In that vein, have we modeled that out? Like, do we have any sort of internally, wherever it is, this is what would happen if it was a 2%, if we kept 2%, 3%, 4%? Do we have that written out anywhere?
We have looked at different tiers of how that would potentially have an impact to us. But the other side of that is we're building the budgets for all of our schools. And so it would require reshuffling of funding in order to support that kind of a change. So I, I keep stating that because while we're also looking at the charters, we are also going through blueprint implementation for all of our schools. And this is the second year of that implementation, which is requiring um our schools that are below that 75% threshold to get up to where they need to be. And so we have some schools that are receiving, you know, well below that 75% threshold. They're in the 50s or in the 60s. So we have to get them additional resources mandated by law to get them up to that 75% threshold. So we're already shuffling the pot of funds outside of the charter schools to support those schools that need the resources the most. And it's coming from other traditional schools in order to do that. It's a zero-sum game, so this would just be a part of that process and it would impact all of our schools.
Absolutely. And just my last part of that question is, do we know what those specific numbers are? Like, that's what the question was, too.
In aggregate?
Yes.
In aggregate, the impact would be about another four to six million dollars that we would be shuffling around from one sector of schools, the charter schools, over to traditional schools in order to support that type of balance or adjustment in aggregate.
I have additional questions, but I don't know if this is necessarily the space to ask it, so I'll hold it, Chair.
Thank you so much. Board member Walker.
Yeah, I'm just giving you the two and a half minutes back to respond to the last question. It was around sped, which you've already talked through. I completely understand. The 2% you've talked to as well, I just was hoping you can just expound on um what the, it's not guidance, but what the, it's not a law. So what the hearings and rulings have said for the 2% of where we are. And then finally, the collaborative meeting um that has happened um per our board member last month.
Yeah, so one thing that the ruling was very clear on was around the 2% fee. You know, the wording that they used was just not, that was not being recognized on a going forward basis. And instead, it was this focus on centralized services. It did not specifically define what are mandatory centralized services and what are optional centralized services. So that's where there's that gray area where it's not clearly defined in the ruling. Each of the LEAs certainly have a, you know, beliefs around what those required services are versus those that are optional. When it comes to the collaborative conversations, the reviews that we had at the end of March, in the of April with the charters, was similar to what was shared with our traditional schools as well, which was just really going through the funding formula, how it's changed year over year. We talked about the um centralized services, the type of services and what those are. And then we shared with them in those meetings that we would be following up with them with this additional comprehensive document, resource document, that really clearly defined what the centralized services are for the district. And then at that point, we would commence having these further conversations around what would be negotiated that they may want to opt into or not partake in. So those conversations have not started yet. So the meetings that we had at the end of March, April, was around the calculation, around the process that we're going through, what has been considered in their allocation, the negotiation of the central services. That's what we're looking to get through over the next, you know, month and get to a place where we can then incorporate that feedback into the finalized version of the, of what the calculation would be along with, hopefully at that point as well, we would have an approved budget from the county. We'd kind of know what direction we're going in to reconcile and close our overall budget because that impacts the budget for all of our schools. And so those two work streams would be happening around the same time, which is going through the negotiations with the operators, where we would have this comprehensive conversation as well as finalizing and reconciling our budget to get everything locked down by the end of the year so we can be ready for the allocations to be distributed July 1.
Perfect, perfect timing. All right, uh, so what, what I would like to do, um, is that everybody second round? Okay, what I would like to do is um respectfully ask the superintendent, could we postpone the uh transportation update and do a third round um for um this charter school? Because we want to be sensitive. We understand that the charter schools came out today and they want answers. And the Board of Education wants to support, um, you know, that. And we want to make sure that we ask the questions on your behalf and advocate for the charter schools. So we just want to respectfully ask, can we postpone that transportation update? Thank you so much. So without objection, um, I move that we postpone the transportation update to our next meeting. If there's no objection, we'll postpone. Um, the motion is approved. Thank you. So round three. Um, so at the top of round three, I think we had you, Jonathan.
Okay.
All right. Can you raise your hands for round three? Okay, I have um board member, uh, Amy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to understand, I, it, it sounds to me like the charter schools are kind of being hit, if you will, this year with two separate things. So there's the potential of a pretty dramatic. So there's the potential of a pretty dramatic increase in the administrative fee. But then also, am I correct that this is the first year that they and all of us are seeing the real changes to the per pupil funding based on the blueprint? And if I'm right about that, when, and I don't want to talk about any particular school, but we did hear from, from one school that they were looking at a funding cut of potentially $500,000. Is that a mix of the, of a change because of their per pupil funding and the potential administrative fee? Or is it just one of those two things?
Each charter school's change year over year is different. Some, when we went through and we reviewed the year-over-year change for each charter with the operator, not only did we talk about the whole harmless that some of them received that would not be continuing, we also talked about the demographics of some of their students for 26 funding is different than the funding for 25. And that is part of the blueprint. It changes for our own schools as well. You can have shifts from one year to the next. And so it's, it can be a different answer depending on the charter school. So that can be a part of it. It could be the hold harmless, it could be a change in their student demographics. Most of them have some compensatory education funding, not all of them have as much ML funding. So the majority of it is really foundation and compensatory education, but that can go up or down depending on your mix of students. And then on top of that, they also have the impact of the change in the administrative fee as well.
Board Member Brown.
Yes, thank you so much, Chair Jackson. Chief Howe, we appreciate you. I don't want to let you breathe. I want to talk to the charter school office, please. Thank you so much, ladies, for coming. My biggest question I think I had is, I, and I want to have this opportunity to kind of be like a MythBuster situation, does, do charter schools have to get private funding? And is that a formula that is discussed with them every year, every three years? And are they told to possibly keep that private, private funding as a reserve in the event of? Can you guys explain that or kind of talk about that? Is, if that's a requirement, is it not a requirement? What does that look like?
It's definitely not a requirement. As a, as a former leader of a KIP school at a point in my career, it was something that we chose to do. We raised about $1 million a year to, to cover costs, to pay teacher salaries, to pay for extracurricular trips that we chose to do. So I don't know that there's a, a place, statutory, statutory place in the country where schools are required to go out on the philanthropic trail to, to raise money, but it is a common practice.
Yes, DC Public Schools does it, I know for sure.
Absolutely.
Obviously, the districts that you are from. And so I was very curious if that was something that was allocated everywhere, even Michigan, believe it or not, which is a charter school, I think, capital of the world. But I was curious if our charter schools were looking at different funding streams, especially because just in general, the climate that we're in federally, statewide, and locally, every single one of us is in a deficit, and I wasn't sure if they were going to have an opportunity or have had opportunities to also raise funding outside of PG CPS.
The opportunity is always there, but it's up to the individual charter in reference to whether they go out for certain grants, philanthropic dollars. I do know one in particular that did put it in their plan to potentially go out on the philanthropic trail to look for additional dollars to support their, their funding needs.
Okay, and I think if the charter schools do want support on what that looks like moving forward, we, I think we, as PG CPS, need to support them in doing that.
Absolutely. What, what happens in general, actually, when I was putting together my, my, my initial staff, the first person I hired was a development director, even prior to, to hiring a, because when I put together my budget, I knew that I was going to need more. I was paying teachers a little bit more than, than in the district, so I knew I was going to need more, so I hired a development director first. And that development director knew that if she didn't raise her salary plus essentially 200% of it, then I couldn't keep her. So it was a difficult decision, but it paid dividends and ended up allowing us five years in a row to, to raise over a million dollars.
If I can add to that, excuse me, the charter school office has brought in the president of the Charter School Growth Fund, which is a national organization, to speak with our charter operators about funding opportunities that are available on the national landscape. And as we receive information about national or regional opportunities, we also share that as it comes through the charter office. So we are working with charter operators if they choose to pursue philanthropy as another funding stream.
Thank you. Board Member Constance McKenna.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you to Chief Howe for coming and answering questions. I know we had you in the hot seat for a good long minute there. And also to our charter office for coming out and answering these questions. I think it has been kind of difficult tonight because of the timing in which we got this document, to make sure that we are asking all the questions and able to highlight all of the things like we normally try to. And so I just wanted to make sure I'm giving you all the opportunity with my last minute or so to highlight anything that we might have asked you all that you think you all haven't had time to properly share with us.
One, one thing that I will share is that this is, it's, it's an iterative process, and it's a heavy lift with this implementation and blueprint for all of our schools. And it's, it's not an easy process, and we are committed, the finance office, the charter school office, we've been partnering together very closely in this work, and we are committed to working closer and having a better working relationship with our charters on a going-forward basis. I think we're both, both offices are going through growing pains, kind of new in some of this work. And the goal is to make sure that we are aligned in what this is going to look like on a going-forward basis. I am looking forward to the charter work group resuming in May. I sit on that work group. We have our charter office participates in that as well. Some of our operators that are here are also in that work group, and we've got other LEAs and operators across the state also. And we're all in varying spaces of what this looks like. And admin fee is all across the range, and some are as high as 25%, some are as low as 2%. So it is really a myriad of different ways to kind of look at the same piece of guidance that we're receiving. But we're committed to our students and our families that are part of the PG CPS family, including our charter schools as well. And so we want to continue to be able to move this work forward together.
That was for the charter office as well. I apologize, there's only 30 seconds left.
No further comments? Okay, uh, Doc. Oh, she was about to say something? Okay, sorry. I didn't see you over the chair, sorry.
Just, just that, just wanted to underscore that we are, the office is committed to the collaboration across the offices in support of, of next steps. And I know we didn't have a chance to highlight a lot of the work that we've done across the district, but we did include information in the appendix. And just to remind, I know we did have a chance to share during a work session two Fridays ago in small groups, but there's much more information about the work that we are engaged in, in the appendix.
Thank you. Dr. Endefu.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to hear a little bit more about the working group. I think there were some questions here about whether or not a collaborative meeting actually took place. What it sounds like is that there were a number of other things that happened instead. But it, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding that you're saying that the collaborative meetings will be in the format of this working group? Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, so we're, it's two different work streams, if you will. So we're still working through our own process for PG CPS charters and finalizing their budget for 2026, and working through the defining of PG CPS's central services and incorporating that conversation and dialogue with our charters here. Then there's the state work group, which is looking to help define and structure and provide recommendations to the state superintendent around the funding allocation formula on a going-forward basis. And so that is being led by the state, by MSDE, and members of our community here will participate, have been invited to participate, it's not everyone, have been invited to participate in that work group. And the structure of those meetings and the cadence of those meetings is being led by MSDE. And I suspect that those meetings will continue into fiscal year 2026 in preparation for the '27 budget cycle.
Okay, as a follow-up to that, um, thank you. Thank you for explaining that. From what I'm gathering, because obviously I have, I have a number of charters in my district, in District One, many of whom are here, it, it feels to me like there is still just, I don't know if it's miscommunication, I don't know if it's a lack of transparency, but it seems like, you know, our charters just don't have the information that they need about what's to come. And I don't know if that's simply because we're still in the process, as you're describing, or if there's just a lack of transparency, which is, I know, part of why we called for some of the things that we asked for prior. So I don't know what we need to do, but I'm hoping that we can, you know, if it's, if it's just be more explicit about what will be taking place within these meetings, if it's about sharing more information more proactively, I know you also mentioned some federal cuts to funding, whatever it is, things that are impacting the bottom line, if we can just be more proactive in sharing that information, then I think we'll have a much more productive conversation and true collaboration with our charters.
Thank you for that feedback, and I'll certainly want to connect with the charter office and, I think, really sort of understanding what additional information they'd like to be able to make sure that they're a part of and that they understand our timeline and where we are, to make sure that we're providing the information being requested. So we can certainly work through that. And those needs may be different for each charter operator, so I want to make sure that we have the opportunity to hear from each one, so we can address those specific needs that some may have, to make sure that we're being as transparent and forthcoming as, as possible.
And I do want to reiterate as well, which we haven't talked about because this has been about charters, but a part of our budget process is consisted of all of our schools. And I know Lisa mentioned that, but a number of our schools are taking cuts in, in different, different areas. We try, we've tried our hardest to keep cuts away from the schoolhouse, but this is a process that has really encompassed all schools. And, and it's unfortunate that we're in this space, but it's just the unfortunate nature of what's happening in the state of Maryland, and what's happening in the country. And it's a difficult space to be in right now, and unfortunately, we're all bearing the brunt.
Thank you. And board member Walker, I'll have you close us out as far as this presentation is concerned. But first, I just wanted to give my first round, because there's been some really great conversation. But I did want to ask Chief Howe to kind of walk us through a little bit of the funding. Like, I, I understand that aggregate funding has changed in general. I know that some subsidies may have fall off, different revenue streams from the federal level as well. And I know we were talking through the per, the per pupil calculation has changed, but I think that there may be some, some misunderstanding on how funding actually works as a whole. But can you, can you talk about, like, some of the funding or revenue streams that aren't there anymore are being reduced? Can you talk through that, please?
Sure. So our primary source of funding for all of our schools is on the unrestricted side. The majority of that comes from the blueprint per pupil funding formulas. So we get foundation for every single student, comp ed, ML, special education, and pre-K. Obviously, pre-K doesn't apply to charters, so K through, K through 12. So, and even pre-K is, is income-eligible, so it's not for every single pre-K student. In addition to that, the blueprint outlines what's referred to as a transition grant. And that transition grant is a declining funding stream that's changing as we get further into the implementation. That is also unrestricted revenue. I think last year was 20 million, this year it's down to 13 million. We get transportation revenue as well. The charters get a share of the transportation revenue. And then we have other ancillary, you know, smaller board sources. Most of that's a reimbursement of costs and things of that nature. So the majority of our unrestricted funding is coming from blueprint, and there's a state share, there's a local share. We do also receive federal funds as well. And depending on the grant and the type of grant, some of it applies to charters where they receive that funding directly. So we all know that ESER funds are burning off, but when that funding was available, the charters received, their fare was distributed to them to spend as they saw fit. We do have charters that are community schools, applies to the same blueprint funding formula, so they receive funding tied to that. And they can also be a Title I school. We've got one charter school this year that's a Title I school, but that can change. Like, for all of our schools, it's not the same set of schools every single year a Title I. And then we also have our other entitlement grants as well. And depending on the type of grant, it may apply to charters, it may not. So Perkins, as an example, is funding source, provides funding sources that supports our CTE programs, but they have to be a certified CTE program in the state of Maryland. That doesn't apply to charters. But then you could have a Title II grant where we provide professional development to all of our educators, and the charter educators participate in being supported by that Title II grant. So it, it varies depending on the type of resource, but the, I think the main takeaway is the funding flows similar for all of our schools. And sometimes it applies to certain schools, and sometimes it doesn't for traditionals and charters. It just depends on the programming at that school.
Thank you.
I don't know if that helps. I mean, we could talk all day about revenue, but that's kind of a, a quick high level. And then there's also fund balance as well, which I always want to remind everyone, fund balance is not a sustainable revenue source. It's like your savings, you got, you dip into it, you spend it, it's gone. And so oftentimes, that is viewed as a funding source to kind of distribute around, but it's not intended for ongoing supporting services like hiring personnel and ongoing operations.
Thank you. Board Member Walker.
Um, thank you so much. And again, thanks again. I know we have a lot of questions to ensure that we have equity across all of our schools. I, you know, a lot of our schools, charters included, have asked the impact of our federal fundings, our grants, you know, and I know that we don't know all the answers now. We don't even have yet backed our budget from the council to begin our reconciliation. So there's a lot of work. I just wanted to remind colleagues that as we go through, and the public, that as we go through this, for every dollar we give is a dollar we take. And so I encourage everyone in this room and that's listening in, when we get this budget back, help us to reconcile. You know, look line by line, because every dollar that we're giving somewhere, we're taking from somewhere else. And what that means is that there's programs, there's teachers, there's grants that's going to be gone, there's all of these things. We got PGCEA over here fighting for our teachers, absolutely rightly so. We got charters fighting over here. I got bands calling me every day, like, everybody needs funding. And so I employ you to stay within this budget process with us, because this is one of those seasons that is just not an easy task. With that, you know, blueprint funding, and when we think about our grants, goes to things like our blueprint requirements, which is our literacy programs, for instance. Like, these are real grants that's in our schools that we have to make hard choices for. So again, I employ everybody to be here with us inside of this process. The blueprint funding is affecting everybody, and it's hitting us so hard, from our charter schools to even our smaller schools in all of our districts. So I just wanted to, to say that piece, and also, we just have to work to make smart, effective, and efficient, hard, super-hard choices. And so we hear you. And I, all of us, we hear you, and we're fighting for you and for each and every one of our schools that are out here, but we've got to make choices, and it's going to be, it's going to be a tough year because we're in such a crisis. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, board member Walker. Superintendent, does that conclude the superintendent's report?
It does.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to 13.0. And, and before we move on to 13.0, I just want to say to the, the charter school parents and advocates that are here tonight, we wanted to just make sure we paused and, you know, making sure that we advocate for y'all the best way we can. So hopefully, we'll get more information, and we'll get the transparency and clarity that you all feel comfortable with. So we'll keep working towards that. Moving forward on 13.0, report of the committees. With, given the circumstance of time, I'll just ask all the committee reports, can you give us the Cliff Notes version? The Disabled Issues Advisory Board Committee, Board Member Brown?
Yes, it's actually really quick. So, good evening. I'm pleased to share that the Disability Issues Advisory Board is now accepting applications to fill vacancies in District Five and District Nine. in District Five and District Nine. To be considered, applicants must currently reside in one of the school districts and demonstrate the strong commitment for disability-related issues. Applications must be submitted Friday, May 2nd by 11:59. For more details, apply on the PGCPS website slash offices slash Board of Education. If you have any questions, please contact the Board Office at 301-952-6115. Thank you.
All right, next, uh, Policy and Governance. Vice Chair Briggs?
Okay. So since August 2024, the Policy and Governance Committee has met monthly to review and discuss policies, ensuring they align with the mission of Prince George's County Public Schools to empower communities and provide high-quality education for every student. The committee concentrated on policies recommended by the Board and the Superintendent that required revisions resulting from potential legal ramifications, citation corrections, rescissions, and cycle updates. The status of the recommended policies is as follow, follows. Develop, uh, development of the legislative platform. The total number of policies recommended for the school year 2425 was 52. The number of enacted policies to date is 13. The number of rescinded policies to date is 15. The number of policies currently under review is 17, and the number of policies awaiting review is seven. The total number of views, bills reviewed include 188. For proposed legislation for the 2025 session of the Maryland General Assembly, Prince George's County Public Schools, in collaboration with the Policy and Governance Committee, has adopted the following position. Number of bills supported was 28. The number of bills supported with amendments was 10. The number of bills opposed was 42, and the number of bills with no position was 180. The committee will continue its efforts to review, update, and implement policies that serve the best interest of all stakeholders, including PGCPS students, staff, and the broader community. A full list of the policies and bills can be found on Board Docs. In accordance with Board Policy 8101, policy development, the following policies are for Board consideration. New policy developing curriculum doc, documents for instructional programs in elementary and secondary schools. That concludes the Policy and Governance Committee readout.
Thank you, Vice Chair Briggs. I want to pause for a second, Superintendent, and recognize Superintendent House.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. There was one other item, uh, on the, uh, the charter agenda. Uh, we did have a, a new charter that was presented, and we need to have that information shared with the Board.
Thank you for that. I don't know if we can still access our PowerPoint. If so, um, we are on slide 16. And while we're waiting for that... I can do a voiceover while we're waiting for that. So the Charter Office received an application for consideration to open a new charter school. The anticipated name of the school would be Imagine Rock Creek. At full capacity, the school would serve grades kindergarten through five. The proposed location is in the Upper Marlboro District Nine area. The operator is an existing operator in Prince George's County, currently operating for Prince George's Charter Schools. When we identified the, or looked at the needs, we know that it would provide additional kindergarten through fifth-grade seats. And we know that this operator has had proven success in early elementary grades. So based on the information that was included in their application, uh, a review of the application and a capacity interview, if we could go to slide, we're going to skip to slide 10, I'm sorry, slide 18, if possible. Yes, please. The Charter Office is recommending, uh, that the charter be approved with conditions. And the conditions being, pending the results of a full Prince George's County Public Schools needs assessment to analyze the following. The elementary instructional programming that's needed and that already exists in the district's portfolio. The value add of an additional elementary school with additional elementary school seats in Upper Marlboro and District Nine. And with additional supports from, uh, the Charter Office, which would include monthly progress monitoring and tracking of effective implementation strategies for, uh, school opening as monitored by the Charter School Office. That concludes our report.
Okay, thank you. Are you, are you guys asking us to take, uh, action on this, uh, tonight? Was, was that the request? Or was this just more informative?
More informative.
Okay, thank you so much.
The consent agenda.
It's on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I request that it be pulled from the consent agenda to general order.
All right, cool. So, all right, so what we'll have to do is, um, move the, what, what item number was it? Okay, so I guess you'll have to make a motion to move 15.4. You want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'm making the motion that, I believe it's Mr. Swift. When we request for consent agenda to be moved to general order, it's called pulled, items pulled from the consent agenda.
Yes. That's it?
I mean, it's just a request to be pulled. I don't, I don't recall there being votes.
You don't have to make a motion for that, or can you just pull it? He said you don't have to make a motion, we'll just pull it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll move that item 15.4 to, uh...
15.5, to be clear.
Excuse me, 15.5 to general. All right, um, let me move back to the top, that made me lose my place. All right, um, so the chairman recognized the Superintendent House to present the consent agenda, 15.1 through 15.4, I guess now, right?
Yes, so thank you, Chair Jackson. Board members, as indicated, um, items 15.1 through now 15.4 require Board approval. Uh, approval of proclamations commemorating National Physical Education and Sports Week. 15.2, approval of social and emotional learning, continued education contract, the National Network of State Teachers of the Year, and finally, approval of the Brandywine Area Reorganization Plan.
Thank you. Board members, would you like to pull any other items for discussion under general orders? And just remind, just a reminder, pulling an item does not denote a no, it indicates a desire to discuss further. Okay, uh, agenda item 15.5 will be discussed under general orders. If there is no objection, the consent agenda items 15.1 through 15.4, uh, will be adopted. There being no objection, the consent agenda items 15.1 through 15.4 are adopted. Moving to unfinished business, there is no unfinished business tonight. Also, we want to move to general orders now, so, uh, we will open up 15.5 new public charter school application, Imagine Rock Creek Public Charter School. And I will open up for discussion, okay? Board Member Briggs? Um, excuse me, Board Member Boozer Strouders?
Thank you so much, Chair Jackson. So I wanted to express some, um, concerns about this, uh, new charter school and expanding it at this given time, considering the, um, budget implications we're hearing for our, our charter schools. For this particular one located in the, um, uh, Upper Marlboro area, there are, um, going to focus on the under-enrolled schools there. Barack Obama has 205 seats, Patuxent has 170, and Rosaryville has 265 seats for 641 seats. And this is the September 30th enrollment report on our website, which is the very much directly related to, um, issues of another PGCPS charter school that is in financial crisis. And under, under enrollment, uh, from the set, uh, seats in charter schools, you cannot over-enroll a charter school in the lottery process, but you can end up under-enrolled. And of course, per pupil funding matters. In this context, I'm quite concerned for this school's expansion and not having another school in that crisis. Imagine Schools also compared to, they, these are massive nonprofits that end years with millions of dollars in profit, which is important because they maintain buildings. Friendship Network ended with 6.6 million, Chesapeake Lighthouse, 9.4 million in 2023. However, Imagine Schools is losing money as a network. They lost $3.7 million across their schools in seven states in 2023. I do not think now is the time to expand a, a charter school. Thank you.
Board Member Walker?
Thank you so much. You know, as I think about charters, I think about choice, I think about District Nine. As I, as I think about District Nine, I am concerned about introducing or recommending another charter school inside of District Nine. We have three charter schools in District Nine, so I am extremely, uh, looking forward to this needs assessment, per your recommendation, to have this here, because what I see in District Nine, um, and I also want to engage the community inside of that area as well, which is going to be very important. As we take a look at even the District Five school that's sitting in District Nine temporarily, there's been lots of discussion for that. So it's very important that this comes to the community so we can have an overall discussion about it. If, I think what I'm hearing is you're saying we have needs for K through five, I want to understand where those are. Because what I see on record is that we have under enrollment. We also have rural areas inside of District Nine collectively. And that also brings me some concern about, uh, potential cannibalization inside of our district, which then brings us right back to not only following our pupils, which is also very important, but the under-enrollment that's going to then be established inside of our current schools, which are really struggling as well. So I do have concerns, having not seen the needs assessment, but hearing that it is recommended to come forward. So I'd like to be engaged in those discussions as we move forward as well. And I just did want to put that out there for ensuring that we bring in the District Nine community to hear more about this and hear those, um, constituents as well. Thanks.
Board Member Goines-McCas?
Thank you, Chair. I also have, um, some fundamental concerns about the whole idea of approving something with a condition of getting a needs assessment after. Especially considering that as a board, we have that dual responsibility. Number one, obviously, to be a good steward over our district PGCPS schools, but also of our charter schools as their charter authorizer, which is a different hat. I don't know if this is necessarily like time where we can ask those types of questions, but just the thought process behind why we would do a conditional approval and then get a needs assessment to see what the impacts would be overall.
If I, if I could. So we, we definitely wanted to bring this application to your attention, which is why we, um, wanted to ensure that today, at this, at the April session, that we provide an opportunity for you to, to consider. We are, top priority for us is the needs assessment, but we were up against time. And we had to ensure that we provide an opportunity for the Board to take a close look at the potential for the design. Once we have an opportunity to engage in a needs assessment, and that includes a, a needs assessment not just for, um, um, seats, but also program and needs as well. We would like to, we look to come back in May with, with more information so that we can present an opportunity for the Board to make a, a informed decision.
I greatly appreciate that, and I think I echo my colleague's sentiments. Imagine as a, as a charter network has done amazing things. We just got our first, well, well, they're one of two, I won't say that. But they do amazing things for our military families, specifically at Imagine Andrews. It's not about that specific network, but about wanting to be able to be good stewards of money and resources and making sure that we're serving the needs of all of our students. With that, I don't, I want to make sure with our, um, parliamentarian, am I able to make a motion at this time? Or I guess that would be a, because this is a consent agenda item, am I able to, I guess, amend the motion?
Is there a motion on the floor?
Am I able to amend the motion on the floor? I guess is the question.
She able to amend the motion? She wants to amend the motion on the floor. Yes, you can amend it. So what's the amendment to the motion?
Thank you. So my, I guess the amendment, whether we...
Oh, and Mr. Swift said, make sure that you only talk to me, not him.
Bad.
I'm just, I'm just, don't shoot the message.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chair. So my motion is, can we postpone the vote on this until May meeting, where we will have further information from our Charter Office?
Yes, but there's not an amendment, it's a motion.
If I, could I?
That's, that's not an amendment, that's a motion to postpone. So she, can she make that?
Could I provide clarity?
So you can, you move the postponement to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to postpone till the next meeting.
All right, cool. So the motion on the floor is to move to postpone to the next meeting. Is there any discussion? All right, we'll, we'll take a... The, the, the original motion was, um, to adopt, uh, the recommendation by the Superintendent of the Charter Office to, um, to approve, um...
Not to approve it.
To approve, we had a, it was to approve the, um, Rock Creek.
I get, my understanding, Chair, is that if it was a consent item, the, we were then voting on, do we consent to approve this with conditions?
Yes, it was to approve.
And my question was not to, I guess, why, I thought it was an amendment?
Yes, I apologize. This should be for consideration. So we were, our intent was to present this application for consideration and to have an opportunity to present again in May for a vote to move forward or not. But so we were, we were present the recommendation in May. I guess, I think the language was inaccurate. So we wanted to share this, um, application for consideration with an opportunity to provide more thorough and detailed information to include the results of a needs assessment for a May vote.
Right. So, so I think that was the mix-up. This, this had never been a part of the consent agenda item, and I think that's where the mistake was. So, so you guys are just essentially, um, bringing this to our, um, information for consideration, and then we'll, we'll take an action on it at our next meeting?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
All right. So I think that's where the mistake was. It shouldn't have been a consent, uh, agenda item, uh, more of a presentation, um, informational piece, okay? So now, now that we're down this road, so from a parliamentarian procedure pers... Okay. Okay, so we're going to postpone the vote to the next meeting, and I think we need to, do we need to take a vote on that? Without objection, can we postpone the vote to the next meeting? Seeing as there no vote, uh, we'll postpone the vote until the next meeting. All right, moving to... We working tonight, yeah? New business? There's no new business? All right. So, okay, I think we're good. So, uh, we're going to adjourn. We want to thank you all for joining us tonight. To our online viewers, thank you for watching. There being no further business, the time is now 9:37 in the April 2024, uh, 24, 2025. Prince George's County Board of Education Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.